All right, well, it is six, six P.M. And we'll begin by facing the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for my throat. It's getting better, but it's been about two weeks now, so. The meeting opened at 6:00 P.M., pledge of allegiance, and have you had a chance to look at the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, question has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as written. Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move right on to number four, public input.
I do have something, it was brought to my attention today about kids on golf carts, and very young kids, they can barely reach the pedals, and they're out and around still.
School?
Yeah, yeah.
It's winter time.
And the lady, the lady that brought it to my attention today, she said that the kid got cheeky with her, so, but it's...
Well, we should talk to the B.D.
Well, what's happening?
Yeah, of course, but we should, we should actually get them in front of it. Of course, that might be difficult. Is there anything else?
I have public input. I had a lady contact me on Off-Stud Street, a couple different times this past week, she's had, she's been smelling sewer smell outside, and there's been ones that she had smelt it inside the house as well, so she don't know if there's something going on with it. Off-Stud.
Oh, the entire street?
Yeah, she goes outside and she can smell it out in the air, and I said, are you sure it's not galla chicken newer from out the fields? And she says, oh, it's city sewer.
So I...
I'll just...
What block?
Is it, yeah, south or north, I mean, north or south?
Off-Stud and Fifth on the corner there, kinda like by Beeler's.
Yep.
Fifth?
I don't know if there's a manhole in the street that's maybe some smell could come out of.
There is, but...
Yeah.
It's gonna be overdone tomorrow.
Yeah. And then I had somebody else contact me, wondering if the old clubhouse would be for sale, to purchase and leave it where it's at and build a, like a log cabin out there and leave out the golf course. So, it's something I'll bring to the table.
Well, just tear down the outside?
Yeah, re-shell it and build a house, use it as, as a shell, and I said, yeah, that ain't a bad idea.
To live, personally?
I think so. So, I brought it to the table.
Well, that's something to talk about. I never even considered that, but...
Live right on the golf cart?
That's right.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Except for the, well, actually, everybody's shooting away from that.
Yeah.
So, you're okay.
Yeah. So, that's all I have.
Any other public input? If not, we're gonna move on to storm sewers. I should make note that item six, Sam Nelson, is gonna be late, so we may have to move that down as we go. But, as far as the storm sewers go, they, they came in and they shot, they shot pictures, and the guys saw the pictures. I guess, I don't know what that showed us, other than the fact that it was clear. I mean, it's basically clear, except for one spot that they said their camera couldn't get over. Well, if the camera can't crawl over, it'll burn, I say. If the camera can't crawl, crawl over, burn, that's, water won't have a problem with that. So, I guess, the real point is not the bottom, but the top, where the, excuse me, where the joints meet, I think we're seeing splitting and, I don't know, egress of water. I mean, how can you say without seeing the water move?
Yeah, I agree.
We proved that when we ran water very far north and down, it came out the bottom. So, it's not plugged. Is it, I don't know, reduced, the...
Give you restricted stuff.
Yeah. So, I don't know whether we can even make a motion right now. Sam, have you talked anymore to...
FCS.
No, not, not FCS, the rail line.
No, the last email, I can find it here, the last email I got from L.G. Everest...
There you go.
Said they needed a, he said it might just be, we need to do this, and then I haven't heard back from him. Give me just a second, let's see what he got.
Well, this time of year is not the time of year to look into putting a cement box over that and all that, but I don't know what else to do, so...
Pray for rain, so we can see something?
Well, if we got rain, we would see something, that's for sure.
Did you want to set up a time of call window for Dale and Mommy and you to look at this?
Well, probably good to talk to them, but I don't know if they'll have any more information than we have, according to the pictures that they already provided, so, I don't know.
Here, I found a very, this is from October 10th, he said, thanks for calling, sent some pictures if you get a chance, if I get a chance to run down that way near Fiddler, I'll swing through and take a look. Prelimarily judging from Google Earth, it looks like an occupancy permit may suffice. That's Scott Banditop with L.G. Everest.
So, what he's saying, excuse me, what he's saying is, somebody has the ability to take occupancy, quote unquote occupancy, and then fix it. I don't, I don't care if it's a city, I don't care if it's FCS, I don't care if it's L.G. Everest, somebody has the ability to take occupancy, correct?
Hey, I don't know what an occupancy permit is. I have no idea what that means, but I'll find out, but yeah, I mean...
Sounds like that's...
Sounds like, yeah.
I mean, it's logical.
Yeah, somebody, somebody gets a permit, they go in and fix it, and they fix it, you might guess.
So...
But that's the last I heard from him. He did not, from the tone of his email, didn't seem like it, he didn't put me down right away.
Yeah, he wasn't like, we'll do this tomorrow, yeah. Well, and the same thing applies with the county, same thing applies with the city, and the same thing applies with FCS. Nobody is willing to just say, let's do this tomorrow, because they have no idea if it's gonna be $2,000 or $27,000, I mean, who knows? So, what we need is an engineer's opinion. Not, not, I'm just, I'm just using you as an example, but maybe what we need is an engineer's opinion to say, this is what we see, here's the best way to fix it, it's gonna cost, I don't, I don't care, $2, $27 million, whatever, but at least we can figure out what we're talking about. And we need, we need input, we need logical input. Doesn't that make sense, or not?
I think so, yeah. We find a...
Well, no one's gonna wanna take action and see if it's gonna be $27,000.
Well, no, not even, not even 27, well, yeah, $27,000 isn't so bad, but...
May I ask a question? You may wanna put parameters on an occupancy permit, you put parameters on what they can do, because it may come back and have an effect on the city's already existing stuff. You understand what I mean?
Yeah.
That, that could happen if they decide, if you leave it up to somebody other than the city or whatever, you need to put parameters on that permit to protect you.
But I think that if we get the right people involved in this process, it's gonna be done either right or not done. Leave it the way it is, water's shooting out all over, or fix it right. There's no fixing it halfway, in my opinion.
Are they even gonna be able to do anything right now, with the ground?
No, no, I don't, I don't even, I'm not even talking about right now, I'm just talking about getting it fixed someday. I mean, we...
Can I ask, if I, I apologize, 'cause I, I don't know much about this, is it just a culvert that's collapsed, or...
You could say that. It's more than a culvert, it's...
A storm sewer. That drains into Iowa.
I don't know, four, five foot diameter culvert that comes straight down from Iowa, I'm gonna just say Iowa Street, and then into the fairground area and where the grain elevator and everything is, and then kinda deviates a little bit over to the east, and then goes south to the crick. And, I mean, it's still, I don't know, it's still gotta be three foot in diameter at the bottom.
But there's an easement for it, and the city owns it, I'm assuming?
That's the gray area.
Okay.
The, this has been a huge adventure for like, five different entities to me.
Oh, golf.
Well, at one point, there's railroad, a railroad right-of-way, and this is within the railroad right-of-way.
Okay.
And storm sewer runs underneath it, there are strips of land that are adjacent to the railroad right-of-way, there's like a 10-foot strip that nobody owns, and then these things were imperfectly platted several times, to the point there's actually a quiet title action going on with the elevator for parcels all the way around the elevator, which includes this kinda 10-foot mystery strip. But this thing appears to be in the right-of-way, and a lot of water that comes down the hill kinda flows into this and then goes south along Iowa Street between the elevator and the gravel part of Iowa Street.
It initially was a ditch.
And it's all storm sewer, so, yeah, initially, there was storm sewer to a point, and then a ditch.
And this ditch was like, I remember it when I was a kid, when we would come down to the county fair, I mean, this thing was like 10 feet wide and 10 feet deep, it was this massive trench that ran south, and then it got filled in and covered with this culvert that we've been talking about.
But that's not the worst, well, I don't even know what the worst part of this is. There's that culvert that he's talking about in the ditch, that's probably three foot in diameter. There's a huge culvert north of that, that is, I guess, our storm sewer, and there's a break, and it's got a, I mean, you could drive a pretty good-sized moped down inside that hole. That's how bad the break is.
If you just want a little feedback, you can use the same process you use for water and wastewater funding, and maybe you're aware of this, but you can do a facility plan, where you investigate the problem and both option the cost estimates and apply for funding, 'cause it's the same mechanism as you did for water and water, especially when you're talking about, it sounds like to me the street's a sizable area of town, if it's that big.
Oh, it's the bottom end of the whole town.
Yeah, so it's a benefit to the whole town, which makes it an even more likely candidate for a project like that, and so, that would be one option for a funding mechanism. And for a solution, it's gonna take a little while to fix, so it's not something where, I mean, 'cause you have to go through a whole process and apply for funding, and you won't quite make, 'cause October's passed, you know, you won't make that first funding round to get maybe as much grant money, but you can apply any time throughout the year, once the facility plan's done. So, it'd probably be a question to, is it an emergency or not, to get it fixed, 'cause that would be a, a whole different kinda category, emergency.
Well, I don't think it's an emergency, because the water still flows downhill. I mean, I, I don't mean to discredit FCS, but the water still flows downhill, and it goes to the crick, and it goes away. That being said, I'm sure it would be best if it did it in a uniform manner, so...
I could talk to our strange, reform drainage team, assess the path to city, whatever, wanna go down and just find out, I don't know what our availability is or timeline that we could complete the work, or it could be a proposal for the work, but I can certainly ask.
Could, could we at least tonight, get action that says we look for a proposal from an engineer? I mean, Banner, I, I don't care, Billy Rubin, I, somebody that can tell us what to do, and what is best, 'cause something has to be done, it's our storm sewer.
Looking to seek out engineer help or something?
Yeah, yeah, engineering, I don't know, input, direction?
I'll make a motion to seek engineering input and direction to come up with a solution for the storm sewer on South Iowa Street.
I'm sticking in.
Motion's been made and seconded, excuse me, to seek engineering and direction on the South Iowa Street storm sewer issues. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, move on to legal updates. Liberty Agreement.
So, the reason this is on there is, one of the, the community center staff is trying to think outside the box and trying to offer some service, and one of the things that they thought of is, what if we offered delivery service just in the city limits on Friday's opening? And we called our insurance agent to see if a vehicle would be covered under insurance if it was used in that capacity, and it would not be. And so then, I asked Sam to look into it to see about drafting a waiver that said if someone does do that, that they would be responsible for any ticket violations or any damage to their vehicle.
Sounds right. So, a couple, a couple things on this, Pat did ask me to draft that, I did draft it, and I managed to get an email to Pat right before I left, so it doesn't matter if it's too late. It's, it's a draft at this point, we may need to tweak it, but what it essentially says is, the individual who's gonna be driving acknowledges that they're not gonna be covered by the city for any form of automobile insurance, that they have valid license, that they have their own insurance, and that they waive any, any liability, and they agree to indemnify the city for any, anything that they may have caused, so, you know, they run into me and it's their fault, and I decide to sue the city, they're gonna make the city whole. I have, in looking at this, I've, and I mentioned it to Pat, it was, I don't know that the city could do this, I don't know that they should, but if they should, they should definitely have this waiver, I think, another course that the city may wanna explore, which of course, you know, might cost some money, is whether or not there could be any insurance policy for, or coverage for somebody that was doing deliveries on behalf of the city. It will, this thing could be eight pages long, it'd be super bulletproof for the city, and you're still gonna get sued as the city 10 times out of 10, 'cause the city has a deeper pocket than whoever is driving, but this may provide us at least some protection, so it's, it's just out there as a draft for your review.
So, it's basically, what, what do they call that?
Uber?
Yeah, no, not Uber, food, DoorDash there. Or, or a reasonable backside.
Yeah, kinda, I mean, you know, Casey's and Pizza Ranch and those.
Oh, oh, I'm sure, yeah.
They have delivery, but I don't think the Pizza Ranch and Ken, they have their own vehicle, person uses, but...
But Pizza Ranch and Haywarden is not that far away, neither is Casey's, so, it's something to be, I guess, cognizant of and just prepared for.
I think I'm with Sam on the idea that maybe we should look into, if they want to do delivery stuff like this, to look into what an insurance policy would cost for us, because like he said, if they're out driving, delivering for the city, the city's gonna get sued no matter what, no matter what we have them sign off or whatever, they're essentially working for the city, doing a job for the city, they're, it doesn't matter what we have them sign.
I guess my question is, if you're a Uber driver, or a whatever driver, are you working for the city? I mean, I'm gonna start Friday as a UPS driver.
But we're not talking about Uber drivers coming in here, we're talking about somebody that works at the community center delivering, correct? We're not talking about like a law Uber.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're talking about somebody that works at the community center...
Yeah.
While they're working to be making deliveries.
All right, I understand now.
It would be somebody bussing, or, or a server that paid, that turns those orders or steaks, bring them over to their house.
Right. Okay, I see. Well...
So, do they really think they can handle this?
There is a, a lady that is interested in doing it, just as supplemental.
And she's not currently employed, or she's...
This would be supplemental income, so it would just be, she already has a, a day job, but just...
No, I mean, she's not currently employed by the community center?
Correct.
Well, see, that, that's where my problem lies. I think a community center employee doing a delivery is like Casey's Pizza.
Well, she would, if we decide to do this, she would be, be employed in the city.
Okay, well...
I don't know, right now, I feel we need to get cook things in place before we jump into something.
For delivery.
I guess I'm gonna vote to keep that door, I mean, I like the idea to a degree, but I, my vote is to keep that door shut, it's just another expense we gotta overcome, you know, we gotta have an insurance blanket for that, I mean, food gets dropped outside, you slip and fall, you know, all the food's on the ground, who's gonna eat that cost?
I mean, you see the advertisements for pizza, oop, it fell down, oop, you get a new free pizza, well, I mean, that's just an example, but, yeah, just my opinion, value, yeah.
Well, and I've had a couple complaints, or heard of a couple, and I know people always complain that, that food is taking extremely long, the service has been long.
Oh, really?
Forty-five minutes.
Hmm.
I mean, I can't prove it, that's just what, and I think, okay, then we add this to it, is it gonna be an hour, forty-five minutes? You know what I mean?
It'd be nice to know, and I'm not, I'm not picking on that particular instance, but it'd be nice to know when that happened.
Yeah.
I mean, just a timeframe, so we could say, oh, yes, there were 45 people in the, in the dining room, or whatever, or there were 12.
Or a large group.
Yeah.
But that could happen with this, too.
Well, yeah, it certainly could, and it does, all the time.
Right now, we possibly are gonna have one cook, and that's kinda scary.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
I think it's Saturday.
Table it or something.
I think it was past Saturday night, a couple of gals were in there and they ordered the special, and she got her sandwich, and she ordered the drink and fries, and then we got the drink or the fries, she had asked for them, asked for the special, and finally she got done eating, she got her, the special was $12, she told me, so then they, you know, she said, well, I never got it on my food, so why should I pay the $12? Well, they took $2 off. So, are you gonna go in there and buy a drink and fries for $2?
Right.
But that just happened over the weekend.
Well, so, that's a good point.
I think it's maybe a good idea, but I don't think right now...
We're spreading ourselves too thin.
I, I haven't been here to hear a lot of stuff, but I, I agree, I, I think it's a good idea, it'd be something good to look at, but if we're that, I, I don't think we should jump into this.
And go and kinda get stung.
Okay, so, we'll cross A off the list, and we'll move on to B.
Okay. Mr. Clausen had a inspection, voluntary inspection scheduled with myself, and Mr. Phillingsness for Saturday, two weeks ago, and then was not able to accommodate our schedules, we've spoken with him, and we are gonna have an inspection this coming Saturday at 2:00 P.M. If that, it's, I'd let Mr. Clausen know if that inspection is canceled for any reason other than both Mr. Phillingsness and I aren't able to be there, we'll likely go ahead with court action to get a inspection warrant. I have also been looking into, I've just started this, but I have looked into whether or not there are any opportunities through Habitat, through community, USDA, and some other entities that could perhaps donate time, materials, and labor, or he could apply for certain loans or programs that could get his house rehabbed, just to see if those things are out there, make sure, let the city know, and Mr. Clausen know if I find anything on that. That's all I have for legal updates. Pat wanted me to cover the fairground stuff.
Yeah, can you find it?
I've received a couple of email communications from Mr. Miller, which the council can review, not public documents at this time, but the county has asked that the city essentially determine whether or not it wants to commit money or funds to the, the moving and enhancement of the fairgrounds. Mr. Miller and I met with president of FCS the other day, and kinda tried to get him to tell us what their number was, they were willing to... They were willing to pay. He wasn't going to do that. And he wanted the county and the city to let him know how much we thought the fairgrounds movement was going to cost. That would influence their number. I'm fairly certain the elevator has a number that they are either willing or not willing to pay. But in this longer email, Mr. Miller is asking if the city will commit to the relocation in the form of funding it, et cetera. And then at one point at the bottom of the email and into the second page, he thinks maybe the best way to do this is to have the city essentially give or gift the city property to the county so that that way it can all be negotiated with one entity and that might go towards our contribution to the fair. In this shorter email, he says that he reviewed the lease and he doesn't see any language suggesting there would be damages over the city if the county were to give up the lease. But Mr. McDaniel is the guy, the president of FCS, and to his point, I tend to agree with him insofar as the county wanting to know what the city wants to know or what the city wants to do. I think the county needs to tell us how much this project's going to cost. I think they need to tell us where they want to put it, what they're trying to put up, et cetera, before the city can really determine whether or not they want to be involved. You know, if the city says they want to commit $250,000 to the project and it's a $6 million project, what are, is that going to get us over the hump and what are we getting for that? I also did make it known to Mr. Miller, and he understood this, that the city has a number of other things that are frankly more in line with what city governments do that they need to handle. You know, we have our wastewater facility we need to take care of. We have streets we need to repair. And we have other kind of bread and butter city obligations that we need to meet with limited funds. And so, again, we need to know exactly what this is going to cost and what's going to happen, et cetera, before the city commits to providing money. And the city can't really commit to providing money until we know what it's going to cost.
It's kind of a chicken and the egg thing in that respect. But here's my point. Let's say the city says, you know, it's going to be 12 million. I'm just arbitrarily throwing that number out. It's going to be 12 million. The last one that speaks loses. So, if we say it's going to be 12 million and we just sit here, when they come back and say, how's 10-5 sound? Okay. You see where I'm going with this? I mean, I don't, I'm not saying, I know what you're about to say. I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off, Lucas. But I'm not saying we should move the fairgrounds. What I'm saying is we should make it worth the city's while to move the fairgrounds. The city has fairgrounds. It's there. It's adequate. Is it, is it the Clay County Fair? No.
But I guess my opinion here is, my provision on this whole thing is just say we commit our $250,000. Just say it's $5 million. Where's the other four and a half million going to come from? You know, I talked to the county commissioner today for 20 minutes and he flat out told me if this is going to affect any taxpayer, they don't need to go any further. That's city or county. And I told him straight out, I just think, I think we're all wasting, wasting our time. That's how I'm kind of feeling. I haven't seen it because, I mean, I know we got a lot of people that have good intentions of moving it and foreseeing something that could really be useful other part of the year.
Play county fair.
Correct.
But Union County, but.
The county commissioner even said too, where's the money going to come from? You know, if the fairgrounds are $500,000 or a million, it's still not going to, it's just peanuts compared to what this is going to cost in the overall picture.
It's like taking care of a storm sewer. I mean, if the storm sewer is already there and it still costs us $100,000 to fix it, that's $100,000 negative. I'm sorry.
Of course, if I'm hearing you right, you're already, they're basically already saying it's moving.
I don't think, I don't think that's true. I think what they are, I think what the, what FCS has said is, Fair Board, whoever, give us a cost, give us a cost of what it's going to cost to move it. And we'll talk about what we might be able to do to help with that. Part and parcel, you know, that all can give, that can be a separate deal. That could be paying for a building. That could be rolled into the sale price that we'll have, whatever.
That was the whole reason that I said 12 million. I mean, I shot huge. I just said 12 million.
I really failed for being manipulated, big time. We're manipulated by the elevator and the commissioners.
Well, and so the county, you know, Mr. McDaniel said, give us that plan. And Jerry's email, it says that in conferring with the commissioners, they've advised me this process will not move forward until the county commissioners know if the city's willing to commit their portion of the fairgrounds to the relocation of the fairgrounds. I'm assuming he means proceeds, but.
Well, because I've had two phone calls. Lucas has had people at his house. And they're upset. People are upset.
When they say the phrase, their portion, the cities, their portion of the fairgrounds, we know what that value is. I don't know what it is exactly, but let's say it's 200,000. That's it? Okay. Well, yeah, we'll commit that, but that's not going to cut it.
But like that email being said, Sam, that statement, if they commit their portion, that we can move forward with this if we're going to commit?
We'll develop the plan if we can commit.
Point of clarification. Are we on Agenda Item 7 or are we still on legal updates?
We're on 7.
Okay, thank you.
But I guess.
I've had these two phone calls I've had is, what is, I got an email. It was in a meeting. What is going on? I did not know that the fairgrounds.
That's the best question ever.
And I said, what are you talking, what are you talking about? I said, we've had one meeting last May and they said they were told by a commissioner that Elsister has no money and what are they going to do? And I said, well, I don't know. We haven't even talked about it. You know, you're making big decisions here and we haven't even talked about it. And that was kind of the same gist that they came here with, right?
Well, Elsister has no money is the same as saying we're being reserved. We're just saying we're not going to jump into a pool that's boiling lava. So, just give us a chance.
Stay where it's at. The Lions Club, I've had those people talk to me. They say at the fairground movie, the Lions Clubs, all their projects are down the tubes. They truly feel it would be the downfall. They do a lot for our community. I was outside putting our dog outside. The other night, all I hear is roaring of the elevator. They do not guarantee to us what they're going to do down there. They might put in three more roaring things down there.
True.
So, I don't know. I think there's too many unanswered questions there and we're kind of getting, oh, it just makes my blood boil because I think that the fair is something we have here. Elsister doesn't have a lot of big pull, but their fair is. And we're going to let that go, then what are we going to have?
And let me put one more nail in the coffin for lack of a better word or way of phrasing it. But if you put more roaring items south of, excuse me, north of where the fairgrounds is, I mean, it still is, I mean, it's.
City limits.
Between.
It's, well, it's city limits and they're subject to nuisance.
Well, that, but that's not city limits, right?
The fairgrounds would be, and that's where they.
Part of it. Okay, okay. So, part of it is, but my point is if you put more of those noisy things there and then there's a fairgrounds, and when is the fair? About the time that the noisy things are going on. So.
And I mean, you look at Sue Center, they're advertising on the radio. They need contributions because they got rid of their fair and now they don't have enough money to even do it.
Of course not.
And that's talking 17 million and they're advertising for more help.
That's why I said, and I only shot 12 just off the top of my head.
Yeah.
We'll just say, yep, we'll get involved. You throw us 12 million bucks. We'll see what we'll do.
It's not a good discussion.
You see where I'm going?
Money talks.
Yeah, exactly.
And it looks like they just want us to gift any money that we would get out of the sale of the fairgrounds to the county for rebuilding the fairgrounds. So, we would get nothing out of it besides this supposed tax money of these supposed new buildings.
Well, and we could do that because that amount is what, a mere pittance of the 12 million that I'm talking about. Okay, if we give you 120,000 and you give us 12 million in return, I'm all over it.
That meeting we had back in, what was it, May?
I think so. It was a long time.
The FCS manager, I said, you know, this is at least a $5 million project. And he absolutely laughed in my face. He said, you're wrong. You're crazy.
Five.
Fuck, I said, it's going to be at least.
Exactly.
And he said, no.
I'd say it's eight to.
I tell you what, I just think this.
Well, yeah, especially, you know.
Just close the book on this.
Okay, so, I think a discussion is probably over for now.
You know how we feel.
I do. Thank you for.
The money's not there, quite simply.
Well, you know what? That's exactly what he said, that the county said. The city, Elsister says they have no money. They're right. Well, we have no money because we can't justify that kind of cost. So, give us justification. Give us 12 million dollars for our 200,000. Well, then we might consider that $200,000. You see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Okay, number eight, 505 Osted.
I can handle this one as well, Pat, if you want, to the apartment at least.
Yes. So, I have put together the list of expenses associated with the 505 Osted with the demo. I did have to pay some real estate taxes to get it current. There was legal expense for all the title search and everything that legal was done. There was an unpaid utility bill left with the city and then the cost of demo. And then there was some advertising and publication expense. So, the city has $16,593.60 invested in that property. If you would like to go forward with releasing this property to HRC, the steps that would need to be done would be to declare it as surplus property and then assign a committee together of three taxpayers to appraise the property. And that would be the dollar amount that would be, we do have a buyer that's very interested in it. It is another government entity. So, once the price was determined, then that can be shared with the HRC and then it would be the site of a future home.
So, basically, we're saying we are going to try to surplus $16,593.60 worth of dirt. That's the discussion. You've seen the expenses. Do you want to declare it surplus property or not?
I do. That's my feeling. There'd be a potential of a new house going there and that's one opportunity.
There was a potential. I mean, there's always, there's two evidently. So, I'm sorry. This is discussion.
So, is there, I mean, any other concerns citywide than this? Just this?
No, I think it would be a very wise decision to get rid of, to have a plan with it. Because if we don't do anything with it, then the city will have to mow it next year.
Well, right. It just continues to be our expense.
That is correct. Yes. Where, I know if a governor's house goes on it, it is 24 months lead time.
Probably 18, 24 months.
So, depending on how the HRC decides to proceed, maybe they would decide to build a house on that one instead of a governor's house.
The discussion pertains to declaring it surplus property if we no longer intend to use it for the purpose intended. That's the discussion.
And I think you can, I think you can move, go ahead and move to do this and surplus and appraise it. One thing I neglected to mention is that we may be able to make a gratuitous transfer of it to another political subdivision or nonprofit. 652 says we can convey and transfer real or personal property entitled which has been obtained and not held for public use. So, it could be a public part, but you can transfer it to another political subdivision or nonprofit for public charitable or humanitarian purposes without offering the property for sale without the political subdivision or nonprofit corporation paying for the property.
In which case, you wouldn't need the appraisers.
I think we still do.
Yeah, I have to.
I think those two steps need to go together.
Yeah, I think, and I would love for some caution that you should do is just move to declare it surplus, appraise it, and then you've got a dollar value. And then you can move from there.
And I guess I never looked at it as donating it. If you would ask my opinion, I would say I'd like to get our cost back out of it.
Yeah, if that's, I mean, if that's.
But that's your guys.
It is, it does make sense to sell it for what the city put into it because.
I just think going forward, this could happen again. And if we gave it to them, then the next person's going to think that we'll just give it to them.
Well, what have we done on Osted, on that little area?
We've done nothing on that one. The city still owns it.
So, what do we do? If I, or if I as an HRC came to the city and I said, I'd like to consider that property, what would that cost? I mean, would it be the cost of tearing down the house and, okay. So, in that, in that sense, this is a logical step. We need to decide if we're going to declare it surplus and move on.
I'll make a motion to approve declaring it surplus property as it's no longer used for the purpose intended.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve declaring 505 Osted Street surplus property as it is no longer used for the purpose intended. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. So, now, three taxpayer appraisers. I don't know if we could come up with three names at this minute. Maybe we can.
They just have to be property owners.
Property owners within the city. And could council members work?
Yes. We've done that before.
So, I'm not saying that's the best method. I'm just saying that's an alternative. If you got a buddy that you know or a friend that you know that lives next door that probably has a good. If you got a buddy that you know, or a friend that you know that lives next door that probably has a good head on their shoulders...
I'd volunteer my surplus anyway.
Maybe Dave Larson.
I'll volunteer my wife. She volunteered me for that. The least I could do. No, she worked in a real estate office for a while.
What's her name?
Katie Van Hall.
Katie with a K?
Yep.
Katie?
Yep.
T K, K A T I?
My day.
Yeah, that was, that was probably the high point of the day.
I've been waiting on this for months now. I know.
So, when you make the motion, then the motion will be to approve appointing Lucas, Dave, and Katie to be your taxpaying appraisers to determine the appraised value?
I'll make a motion to approve three taxpayers, which would be Katie Van Hall, Lucas Dreeson, and Dave Larson. Taxpayers, appraisers to determine the, uh, appraised value.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Lucas Dreeson, Katie Van Hall, and Dave Larson as three taxpayer appraisals, taxpayer appraisals, uh, excuse me, taxpayer appraisers to determine the appraised value of 505 Osted. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Daniel, you came in here like an hour ago almost, and you finally...
Thank you.
Get to talk to us.
They have your email in their packet.
Oh, good. So, as we talked about, it was a couple months ago when the project was decided, and everybody mentioned that there would be an amendment coming for additional engineering fees to rebid. And so, put that together in the letter that you had in your packets. The original fee for bidding the project for engineering services was thirteen thousand, one hundred. And so, we waited until after bidding was complete, hoping that we could come in under somewhat. And we did come in a little bit under, but there was additional work completed as well. And that additional work that was not originally part of the, the bidding task in the scope are outlined in task three oh five A, and that was to revise and update the bidding documents. So, all the amendment items that were in the first bid were incorporated into the second, or the rebid plans and specs when they went out. And so, that was done. In addition, we had to update all the, the dates that are kind of throughout the bidding documents for various items to account for the new bidding dates, the new completion dates. Download updated wage rates for some of the BD stuff, I won't list all, but there was additional work to get those documents ready for bidding. Before, that would have been part of final, final design. And then, the other thing is we had quite a few meetings between the first bid and when the second bid was issued to go through funding options with the DNR, talk with the council about whether or not to accept the first bid, whether or not to accept the second bid, some additional meetings to update costs. And so, we've got eight additional meetings. So, um, with, you know, came in a little bit under on bidding, but then with all the additional work, the fee that we're requesting to cover our costs is fifteen thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents. So, that would bring the contract limit up from four hundred ninety-five, four hundred to five eleven, one ninety, one fifty. So, I've tried to be pretty transparent with just exactly that additional work in the time, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I don't know if anyone else had an opportunity to look through that, but, I mean, there is a lot of, I don't know, what do you wanna call it, light work that's involved. I mean, fifteen thousand, five hundred bucks is a lot, but I'd rather have it done right. So, I don't know what you guys think, but any discussion is welcome.
I don't think it's gonna do any better.
Yeah. Well, and actually, just for clarification, this, this has already been done. That's why we were, you know, there's certain, like, with bidding, it's tough. There are certain things we have to do that even though you're doing a second time, there's no efficiency, we still have to quote plans out to contractors. We have to mail in to contractors. We have to answer contract questions. We have a meeting here with contractors, and, I mean, there's certain stuff that we just, we have to do again, and it's not, it's not a savings, because you're already done it all.
Well, I will motion to approve banner engineering amendment one, rebidding fee for task three oh five A and three fifty A, fifteen thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents wastewater fund. Current contract, four hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Updated contract, five hundred eleven thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second it.
That was so well stated. There's a motion on the floor, it's called nine A. Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a little, Sam, that other question in insurance, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to...
No, go ahead, I got a, I got a chance to look at it, I agree with you.
It also is in their packet.
Oh, okay, perfect. We just, there was a clarification in insurance. There was a trigger from our previous plans, that we had some high insurance limits, and I think they were, had been to match a relevant requirement, but the insurance limits of the bidding documents far exceeded what is typical nationwide for contractors. I don't even think the contractor could get the insurance limit we have for this type of project. In talking with a couple insurance providers, so, what they provided is, is typical. I mean, I think, I didn't, I didn't bring a copy with me. It's a million and two million. A million per occurrence and two million general aggregate is what's typical. And then, they've got a five million dollar umbrella. So, if something would happen, we essentially have like a six million per occurrence and seven million dollar aggregate policy. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Um, and so, it's, it, I don't have concerns going into it, but I just felt like it was only for, until that council loan run up by the city attorney to be transparent.
Yeah, I appreciate your review on that, and, uh, I completely agree with everything you said.
Okay, all right, perfect. We'll get the contract documents in order. Um, they'll be here by the next council meeting for signature. They don't have to be signed at the meeting. We don't need to be here, but I just thought that everybody's here for signing on that day, so we'll have them down by then.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, we'll move on to chairperson updates, and... It's gone. There used to be a chairperson thing out here. Thank you. So, just to start with the street, I believe that's Lucas as chair. Any new news? Okay. Cemetery is Cindy.
It's still quiet.
All right, even colder than it was.
Yes.
Okay, um, how about the water, uh, back to Lucas?
I don't have anything.
Wastewater, solid waste. Well, Kyle, I know we've got a lot of stuff going on, but, I mean, is it...
We've, we've discussed everything that's going on.
How about the library? Kyle, as well?
Nothing, neither have...
Too much reading? Over there? I'd like to, I've, I've got a card, I should go over there. Uh, golf course, community center, that'd be darling.
Well, I talked to Lyndon again today, and Kelsey had called me one day. It is very slow right now, so, and, uh, Sam has resigned, or is, is not, no longer a cook, and so... I don't know. We're kind of holding out on what's gonna happen with Cameron, I don't know. So, we do just have one, but it's slow, so I don't know. They didn't really say what it is. They've cut the hours down, so we're done at eight o'clock.
Michael is really doing a good job. He gets stuff up, he's doing split shifts.
Yeah, we have a new menu, and, uh, so, maybe once basketball season starts, so...
And we have Michael Cast on off-hours, or, you know, basketball, off-basketball games, and Brandon Cooks.
So, just hope we get, keep business going.
I think it's slow everywhere.
Yeah. It got cold too fast.
All right, thank you. How about the park and the pool? Uh, let's see, that's dark as well.
I don't see anything.
Nothing going on there.
The, um, lights are in that building now, for you.
Oh, that's something I...
Well, they weren't on again the other night.
I brought up to the finance officer in Delany that the lights were on in that cupboard or that...
Yeah, they were on Saturday night, too.
Well, and they, they could be on if people are in there, but now, they're motion detector lights, so, they don't stay on all night long. I mean, I get up at five o'clock in the morning, and I go out and look out the front door, and the lights are on, and I'm like, come on. There's no little kids in there playing around. So, we changed the light switches to those, I don't know, I think about the ones you walk into Casey's bathroom, and the light's off, and as soon as you walk in, the light comes on, and it stays on as long as there's motion, so... I just thought, we, we don't need to run it all night long, so... Thank you, that's good. How about the finance office?
The only thing, um, you may notice a difference in our lights in the building as well. We're gonna slowly replace all the bulbs to be that more white light, and...
LED?
LED.
Yeah.
And they're in the hallway and the vestibule, so...
So, as they fail, you replace them, and I'm sure it takes a new ballast, it takes...
There's no ballast in most of them.
Oh, oh, so, that makes sense.
So, it should save money.
Nice. Boy, that's, that's a lot more white.
And you'll notice the hallway, too, is a lot different.
Good. How about the liquor store?
I haven't been there, so I think so, that's... I noticed they were really busy Saturday night.
They had Olivia's on the way.
Oh, was that, what was there? There was one up there.
Setting off, um...
Oh, okay.
Well, I see them up and down. I mean, I go by, when I go to my mother-in-law's place, and I see people, and I see no people.
Yeah.
So, but I see the same thing across the street from my house, so, I see few cars, and then I see fifty cars there, so... I suppose it's cyclical, the way it is, so... We'll move on to item eleven, old school center discussion.
So, um, the school has hired G A Johnson, it's a construction company that also has engineer firm, to analyze the old building and to take care of the structural engineering part of it. If we do split this building in the desired location, how is that gonna look? How will it still be structurally sound? They also will take care of the bidding process and creating all the bidding documents when it does go to bid to be torn down. And in discussing that, the water and sewer connection is on the southwest area. That's where the water comes into this building. So, um, I talked with the engineer, and he said, well, do you want the school to hook up water and sewer as part of the bid? And so, I called Jamie, who's the president of industrial board, and, um, he's like, well, um, he would like the city to take this building once it is, the nineteen ninety-four additions, once it is demolished, the older part. And so, then, that would be up to us to get the water and sewer. Because to be fair, if it was any other building in town, and somebody asked to demo a building, we would just say cap off the water and cap off the sewer. And now, we, in order to keep water and sewer to this building, we have to determine where to run the sewer line and where to run the water line. And I told the engineer, I said, this is not a good time to be talking about water lines and sewer lines and putting new ones in. Um, and he's, it's just in the beginning stages of this process. So, what you have before you is how the parcels were split. The El Cester Hudson School still owns the shop, the egg shop, and then they own, we, we did kind of split the building where the chemistry room is. And, um, so the nineteen sixty-seven addition, we're hoping can still stay, and the nineteen ninety-four addition. There is some question on that, and so, the, the engineers will work with us on that part of it. So, I'm not exactly sure where that line is gonna be when the building is separated, and what will be left. But I just wanted you to have a visual of what we're talking about. And the big thing in question is the kitchen, um, because the kitchen is lower. The gym would come off, but the kitchen is the part that's in question, so, I, I don't know. So, the engineers are gonna come down next Wednesday, and we're gonna block the whole building, and they're gonna get a, an opportunity to look at it instead of just these visual maps, so... Then, um, the small map is Beacon Schneider, so you can actually see the actual lot lines better. And then, on the backside, just kind of tells you the square footage of all of them that is left, so... So, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do all of these entities have any idea, I, I think about the water and sewer, all the way in that corner, and having to come over here. Okay, I don't care if it's two days, two months, or two years from now, if somebody decides we wanna build a new mega structure here, right over the top of the water, sewer, everything, there needs to be provisions.
We're gonna put in all the lines. Now, just preliminarily talking with Dale, um, there is a manhole right at the alley between the Baptist church and this White House on the corner. So, there's a, there's a manhole right there. So, it makes sense to Dale and Delany to run water and sewer from our bathrooms, which are right there, all along, and then connect.
Straight shot.
Straight shot. So, that's what we're tentatively thinking. But, again, I, I don't know what this building is gonna end up looking like either.
Well, nobody does. I mean, it could be a skyscraper. We could be the next New York. We don't, we don't know, but, but my point is, preparing for the future is, I'm sorry. Preparing for the future is much better than wishing. We would have said, what if? It's a lot like when they put in that, that slaughterhouse... It's a lot like when they put in that, that, uh, slaughterhouse and they said, "Well, we have to prepare." Well, it didn't float, but they were prepared, so that's a good way to do, do things. It's like building a fairgrounds for twelve million instead of two, whatever.
So we, looking at these plotlines, like the red and industrial board, like is that, like the building we're in, is that city-owned?
No, it's Industrial Board-owned.
So who's the Industrial Board?
So, the Industrial Board is made up of, um, five people in the community. Um, and they, the positions that you serve on the Industrial Board because of the positions you hold within the city. So Jamie Schump is the big president, so he is on the board. I am on the board. Mr. Reed is on the board because of with the school. Um, and then we have two at-large on the board. And so, basically, it's kind of like economic development. Um, we look for ways to develop or improve this thing.
Okay.
So it's something for you guys to think about. Um, I do think, because it's gotta go through design, it's gotta go through engineers looking at it and analyzing, it's gotta go through at least two months of bid, you know, a month to advertise and then a month before they open bid. So, um, I, I think we're probably looking at March. And then, um, we could specify in there that, you know, we really can't have a time when there's no water to this building, so depending on what the conditions are like in the spring, it would be at that point that we run the new lines. So, but I guess the question on the table is, how do you feel about taking this building on?
I guess my opinion would be the advantage of us taking it on. Because, I mean-
Own the building instead of us technically renting, although we don't exchange cash with it, but.
So, Lucas, that's a good question. I, I'm gonna ask it in the reverse. What's the cost?
A dollar.
That's the most important question, in my opinion. Costs us a dollar.
Yeah, but you said the Industrial Board would own this, not the city.
No, we would own it.
The Industrial Board-
For a dollar.
Now.
Oh.
Excuse me, just one moment.
Turn it over to the city.
Oh, okay.
So, if you look, if you go outside tomorrow in daylight and you look at the building, look at the different colors of brick and you can see the additions, and it would just be the single-story addition.
So again, my, I, I, I agree, Lucas. The good question is, what's the advantage? Uh, my question was, what's the cost? And the answer was, one dollar. And that's where the advantage lies. We own the building. Now, I, I know that we don't have a huge amount of rent prospect from the, the thrift store, but still, one dollar equals some rent income. Right now, all we're doing is paying rent. So there would be the quote, "Advantage." There's a major disadvantage. We would also have all of these lights to change to LED lights. We would also have all of the furnace problems and the whatever sewer.
The flat roof that's leaking.
Yeah, any, any. I mean, you own a house, you know.
Our, um, roof is still under warranty beside the part that's over us.
Well, that's encouraging, but, I mean, no matter what, eventually, there, there are expenses involved that will be incurred. But, again, it's almost like saying, do we build the new golf course clubhouse for two million dollars? Or do we just incorporate it by, it's, you know, allowing five hundred thousand dollars donation? You see what I'm saying? I mean, I, we have to cut our losses to increase our gains overall. Because if our losses keep increasing, it doesn't matter what we gain.
I would make one comment here. When I was subbing in Mr. Kanning's room, there, they had crack followers. They were measuring cracks in the wall. So, and it looks like maybe that part of the building is sliding, it's moving. So it's something you wanna check out before you offer it.
All the way on the north side?
Yep, it's all the way on the north side, down in Mr. Kanning's room, but they had crack fa- they, they were measuring the cracks in the concrete wall, the concrete blocks, so I, I just- that's something I know about that you probably shouldn't before you-
So there's possible disadvantage, but I, I don't know what to call this.
If the city's not gonna buy it for a buck, I got five bucks in my pocket, I'll buy half a buck.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll buy five of them for the five bucks. I'll maybe buy ten. Put fifty bucks in.
But it sounds like there's a lot of stuff to go through here for the school to figure out, engineering and all that, so I don't, I think we can sleep on it for quite a while.
Well, that's a good point, too. I mean, it's not gonna happen overnight, but I can tell you that all of a sudden, one day, I woke up in the morning and there was a house on Off-Stead. And later on that day, it was gone. And so was the garage and three trees and a whole bunch of stuff, and, I mean, when it happens, it happens. This is all brick, uh, it's two-story, I mean, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be an undertaking to get it down, and that's not our baby.
No, that part is not us. The only thing-
We don't, we don't have to pay a penny. We have to pay a dollar. And all of a sudden, if we decide to purchase this property. Now, I don't know how much you think this property's worth, but I'd say a buck isn't a bad cost. So, it's just discussion. Let's move on. I mean, we don't need to be a dead horse. How about payroll authorization?
I would give you one to take that.
Sure. Um, this motion is just to approve that Pat and I are able to originate the document. We have in there that, um, mayor, president, vice-president have to approve it. Um, under the circumstances that none of you three are able to approve it by the time that it needs to be approved, one of you would have to call the bank and authorize Pat to approve it. But Pat would not be allowed to approve it unless you guys say she is. So that is in there as last resort, absolutely only option left. Um, the other thing is, there is a ten-dollar fee for free payroll, but that's only ten bucks. Not too worried about it. Um, but just so that you guys are aware, there is that fee.
Other than that, it would just need to be approved so that we can issue those tokens and then do a dry run this week and hopefully Monday's payroll is direct deposit. The only delay would be that, um, when they issue the dry run, the other bank has to reply and say, "These numbers are correct. This is the right account for said person." They have three days to do that. So if there is an issue, then we have to go back and figure out where the issue is and work with the bank to get the right numbers or the right account. Um, should be pretty safe, straightforward if there are no issues, but.
So let me ask just what I would call an obvious question. Um, the advantage of payroll, you know, automatic payroll, the, I guess, ACH credit, for lack of a better way of putting it, is that the mayor or, or, you know, president, vice-president, whoever does need to approve it, but the mayor, the vice-president, or the president still need to approve it.
You would need to, you can approve it remotely. You, all you'd have to do is log in on your computer, do the quick approval process and say that you saw it. Um, but doing it this way is, you don't have to come into the office and sign every single check.
That's a good point, but there's still an approval process, so.
And that's, that's an option. It's not a requirement. So if you don't wanna have to go in and approve every payroll, it's just an option. And then Pat and I would, Pat and/or I would originate the document, send it, and that'd be that.
So you could start it that way, by approval, and if you see how things are going, could you take that off?
I would assume so. I'm not sure. I'd have to ask, yeah.
Be nice to talk to Custom Coils as to how they do it, because I know they have, some people that have it, some people that don't, some people have it in El Sester, some people have it in wherever. I don't know.
Give them an option. It's, we're all or none. Because the whole reason you guys wanted to do this was so that you did not have to come in and sign the check.
That makes sense.
So, everybody's on it.
Sure they all love that. Um, okay.
It, this is just, this is step one. But would there ever be a step two where people could pay their water bills and stuff online?
Yep. Once we get this rolling, we'll be part of the business program thing that they have going on at Premier, but that's definitely an option that we can work with.
I think that's coming.
So we, um, before we do that process, I just wanted to finish this one and get it operational.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
I think there is something we need to do on our billing software before we can do that. Somehow we need to create the file that needs to be-
Oh, okay. There's a possibility of it broken down.
You mean for the water, water billing?
Yep.
Now, and, and this might be a legal thing, but this was just going through my mind. Like, when we got a loan through Southeastern, we had to get a new furnace. Um, you don't, you no longer have the option to just pay your bill by a check. You have to do automatic deposit. So let's say you have somebody that doesn't pay their water bill. Could it become an automatic?
Disconnect?
Not even a disconnect, but pay, even if he maybe wouldn't get them. I'm, this, I was just thinking outside the box. I don't know. You know, like ours, we don't have an option. You got our loan for the furnace through Southeastern, it has to be taken out of our checking account by, we can't write a check. It has to come out automatically every month.
Right.
And I was thinking, you know, you have other things, and maybe it's not legal, you can't. But I thought, well, they did it to us. I mean, they said you had a-
I don't, I don't know that you-
I would just-
I think that's Reg Z.
I don't know that the, I don't know that the city could require someone to have a banking account.
Okay, but I mean, like, to pay the bill.
Yeah, I don't know that you could. I mean, it's probably pretty uncommon. I can research it for you if you want it.
Well, no, but I just thought, 'cause when we got our loan for our, they, 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 we did it when we were on the farm, too, we had to get a new furnace and it automated. They don't even give you a choice. You have to sign up out of any-
What are you gonna say, Kyle?
I was gonna say, we're talking about payroll authorization, so if we can get through this before we try to worry about the water bill thing.
Well, but that's-
The water bill.
It's the same.
But it's the same software-type thing.
Yeah.
We're just looking for a motion to approve payroll authorization here.
When Don Fickboom drafted this, it's one little checkbox to make it both. But I said, "I just wanna get payroll functioning and operational before we go, because I know we have to make some changes in our software, or I'm fairly certain we do." And the other part of it is, I don't know what that's gonna look like on our bank statement. Like, how do we handle that with respect to, 'cause right now, when we get payments, Abigail writes a receipt for every single one. Do we still do that for every single one, even though it's all in the bank? I don't know. So there's some procedural things. But this procedure that we're doing will be exactly the same when we go to do, um-
Bill pay.
Bill pay. Only word.
Cause I just went through all this, so that-
I know you did.
So, we would need a motion.
A motion to approve users' granted access to originate ACH file, Abigail Moore and Patricia Jerns, and approve users' granted access to approve ACH file are Daniel Peter, Darla Rebe, and Lucas Streason. And approve, if all Alderman and Mayor are not available for approval, Alderman or Mayor to call Premier Bank for a one-time approval by Patricia Jerns to authorize payroll here. You have to say it, people.
I'm not, 'cause I'm, so. Motion's been made according to twelve B as written. And seconded, any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, finance office update.
Um, so the only thing I would say is, um, I get Dale's and my performance reviews done for this year. And then, these are, uh, in your packet is the new menu, like Darla mentioned. Um, so they've kind of refined the menu, so you've got that. It'll be online as well. And we turn one at the community center on December sixth, so on December ninth, Wild Card Band is coming and they're just gonna have some appetizers and drink specials. So you guys would probably welcome to attend that.
Landfill closes, what, November thirtieth?
Which is Wednesday.
And the next city council meeting is December fifth. Thanksgiving, obviously, the city hall is closed and so on Black Friday. And that anniversary, so. Is there need for an executive session? How about the golf course community center input?
Um, they did interview Landon and, um, Kelsey interviewed Cornelia Hathcoat. Um, she just turned sixteen on Saturday, and she has a desire to, wants to learn how to cook. And so, they would request to hire her in the kitchen.
Is she local? I mean, she-
She lives, she's a neighbor to you.
Okay.
I'll motion to approve hiring Cornelia Hathcoat cook at ten dollars an hour effective immediately. Sounds like we need to go.
I'll second it, too.
Motion's been made, seconded to approve hiring Cornelia Hathcoat as cook for ten dollars an hour effective immediately. Any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other hiring?
No.
Well, I hate to say it, but the only thing that's left is to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Motion's been made, seconded to adjourn. Council, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All that adjournment at seven twenty-nine P.M. All that adjournment at seven twenty-nine P.M.